This meeting is out called order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand here. One nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Person.
Here.
Mr. McIrvin.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Pavoni.
Here.
Mr. Corman. Mr. Prince.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the excuse the absent council member.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. McIrvin that excuse council member Corman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have a proclamation, first item.
Hey, proclamation, Small Business Saturday. Whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty point seven million small businesses in the United States, which represent ninety nine point seven percent of all businesses in the United States and are responsible for sixty four point nine percent of the net new jobs created from two thousand to two thousand eighteen. And whereas Renton celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas small businesses employ forty seven point three percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas ninety four percent of consumers in the United States value the contributions small businesses make in their community. And whereas ninety six percent of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said the day inspires them to go to small, independently owned retailers that they have not been to before or would not have tried. And whereas ninety two percent of companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturday said the day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday shopping season. And whereas fifty nine percent of small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim November thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, to be Small Business Saturday in the City of Renton. And I encourage all members of the community to support, to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And witness where I have, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this twenty fifth day of November, two thousand nineteen. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I don't believe we have anybody from the chamber here this evening, but we will encourage everybody to shop locally. We have a great business community now that, both downtown and the, and the landing and lots of opportunities to shop. So, supporting local business supports local jobs and something we really want to do. Okay, thank you. Moving on to administrative report. Jan?
Thank you, Mayor Law. Tonight I have two items. First, with more cold weather on the way, the Public Works Department will be out applying de-icer to major arterials. If we do get snow, please do not park or abandon vehicles within any portion of the traffic lanes. Abandoned vehicles impair snow and ice removal and impact the response of emergency vehicles. Second, there are a number of preventative, street maintenance, traffic impact projects and road closures happening this week. More information can be found on the city's website. Thank you, Mayor Law.
Okay, thank you, Jan. Moving on to audience comments. Do we have a sign in sheet?
There are two, I believe two.
Okay. Apparently, we have a couple of people signed up to address the council when I call your name in a moment. Come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes.
Sorry.
Thank you. Jason Collins.
You know, I don't know what to do about like the impressions and like things that you saw, that you hear, right? Like, but, you know, the meal places, right? There's like some people that you don't want in your community, so they have a hard time renting, right? And then, but like if they're pushing foul impressions, like, and like pushing people that serve the community away from serving the community, what are you gonna, what do you do? You know, like, because I don't know exactly how to inform anybody of anything that's, you know, but like, I got problems with the one guy like Marcus, but I don't know. And I think if you talk to some of the people that were at the dinner on Sunday, they'll say the same thing. Anyway, this morning I got woke up, like, I understand that the cops get called to wake people up that are sleeping underneath awnings or whatever at like a specific time, right? But like, having three cops show up and like, giving somebody fifteen minutes, like, get up because of just biological things that happen while you're sleeping, I don't know, is it like a necessity? Sorry, like, just, can you wait? Like, wake me up and then like, leave for fifteen, see if I actually left fifteen minutes later? I mean, like, instead of having a hard time when somebody is like, get up, get going, and then you're just like, fucking, what? Have to be embarrassed because you fell asleep? It's part of life, right? Like, you have to sleep, right? So, anyway, you know, I'm just like so sick of it, but, yeah, I don't know, I got, it was rude, it's just rude. But C.D., Smith, and it was, I like, wonder if these people are actually officers because like, if you're gonna ask me for my license number or my license, right? And I ask you for your badge number, I think that's just a fair shot at each other, right? So, I don't know why you'd walk back and then try to get somebody trespass because when you ask for their license, they didn't give you their license, and they ask for your badge number and make it a fair trade, right? Like, because I don't have any warrants, so I'd know of, so how is it, how is it wrong for sleeping? You follow me? Anyway, but, I don't know about, about the bugs or whatever it is that making everybody sick to their stomach before dinner, but that shit needs to stop. And I, I'm not gonna go to a cop and think that they're gonna do anything about it because they just prey on people that are homeless, so.
Next is Karen Gellin.
I'm here for two different reasons. My neighbor, low income, her phone had gone out and her car had gone out, had got a job. And accidentally, the roommate left the door open and her dog ran out. Her dog of seven years, and that was well loved. And, and so, a neighbor found the dog and called Animal Control. Unfortunately, this neighbor found out that that was the wrong thing to do because due to the fact that the, the impound fees were insurmountable. Legally, the dog only required a license and a rabies shot, which should have been easily provided for under two hundred dollars, even though the dog was there impounded for a few days until they figured out that the dog was at Renton Animal Control. And the owner was never given any paperwork showing the cost and fees, was asked if she wanted the dog to get update dated shots, and agreed. And at this point, when your licensing, your license application does not require a proof of rabies shot. And so, at this point, you know, she was trying to just do the best for her dog and to get her dog back because she was informed that she couldn't have her dog back without a rabies shot. And she was not told the expenses. The license was purchased. This woman is low income. Fifty dollars to her is like five thousand to us. The veterinarian did an unauthorized testing and exam, and the vet bill came out to seven hundred dollars. It's outrageous. The owner was told she could get in touch with the rescue and the city. Since she could not pay the fee, which on your website says after three days, the dogs are given to a rescue group. But this person contacted your animal control services, and the dog was loved. She was desperate. She was doing everything she could to come up with the money. Every time she came back, the money was more than what she had been told before. And she had managed to come up with two hundred fifty-three dollars, which was her whole life savings. She was trying to sell her car to get this dog back, and the officers can turn the dogs over to a rescue. And within seven days, the dog was adopted out. So, this might have well been that the dog was put to sleep because to her, the dog is now a total loss, and she's devastated. She couldn't be here tonight because she didn't feel that she would be able to explain her situation. Now, I'm not here just to complain. There are plenty of solutions to this type of situation. One, the first and foremost is that Animal Control in Renton, I was gonna wait till I retired and then, you know, take on this task. But after I experienced what my low-income neighbor went through, the desperation and despair and losing her beloved pet of seven years that she'd had since it was a puppy, first and foremost, the name needs to be changed. I can tell, I've been in animal rescue for over twelve years, and when I see Animal Control, I know that the policies have not been updated to today's standards. It should be called Renton Animal Care Services. That would be the first thing I would do. One, it leads the public to believe that you want to care for the animals and you provide services instead of control. Two, I would engage the public with volunteers and fosters, including Friends of Animal, Renton Animal Care Services Facebook page, so that volunteers could be taking care of the dogs while they're impounded to lower these costs of a fifty-five dollar a day impound fee. Now, I make good money, so I board my dog at the state-of-the-art free run, free play, the best facility you can board your dog, and it's fifty-five dollars a day. You're putting a dog in a kennel and giving it a bowl of kibble and water for fifty-five dollars a day. Now, there could be, create community service options where low-income people could pay back these high fees with some community service. There was a promissory option, a promissory note option, that I heard that just a month or two ago was suspended because people weren't paying the promissory notes. I realize that that's probably, when you're looking at it from the point of view of the city, I can see that. But when you look at it from the point of view of the animal, this animal should have gone back to its first forever loved home. Increase community low-cost spay and neuter education along with low-cost vaccination workshops. It's the law that a vet give an animal just a rabies shot. They don't need to tack on a hundred dollar exam fee. They don't need to hydrate the animal for another hundred and fifty dollars. They don't need to do a fecal exam. This dog had been wormed, it had been given flea medicine. I was in the process of working with her to get it low-cost spay and neuter. Unfortunately, this perfect storm of her no phone, no car, and no money, I was out of town. And it was just the one time the dog ran out, and a neighbor thought she was doing right by calling Animal Control. So, I would like to know where we can go from here. I would like to know how, as a citizen, I could be involved to somehow, even in my income, seven hundred dollar vet bill plus a two hundred impound fee, at nine hundred dollars is, is really outrageous.
I appreciate you being here tonight, and you, you make some very good points. What I'd like to ask you to do, if you wouldn't mind, Karen, if you could go to Commander Harden, who's in the back of the room, to give your contact information. What I'd like to do is get more specific information on the address and so that we can track this particular incident.
Yeah, I have the incident number.
Oh, yeah, yeah. If you can get it to him, then we'll be able to look into this particular case and, and then get back with you with some answers. The idea of the volunteerism, the idea, I even love the idea of changing the name. I think that sounds great. There are things that we could do. We put a lot of money into Animal Control. We have a big problem because we have a lot of people that will not license their dogs, even though it's the law to do that. They don't chip their dogs, and so we're trying to keep them alive, we're trying to keep them from getting run over by cars. And the simplest thing of having your dog chipped so that we can notify if we have them in custody or that we've picked them up. A lot of people don't bother to do it until it's too late. And so, we're trying to do the education with people on the value of doing that sort of thing. But I like the fact that you'd like to organize more of a volunteer effort to be able to address these kinds of things. And, but specifically, I'd like to find out about this case and see if we can help her out at all in regards to the impact that it was on the person you're talking about.
Well, and another thing was, is she was told that she would probably be able to afford to possibly adopt the dog back from the rescue group, but then they would not tell her the rescue group. So, as we searched, we couldn't find the dog in order to adopt her own dog back. Another thing is, is that your phone number for Animal Care or Control is the nine-one-one dispatch. And so, when you're calling them, there's, there's, there isn't this attitude of that the public is not the problem. I know, I know there is all kinds of information that licensing does not work, and most of your most advanced animal care services do not require licensing anymore. They would rather use that time and effort to provide funding, you know, for the education, where you go out into the community and tell them about these different things that you're talking about, microchipping, free microchipping. We have free microchipping here, but it's for one-half hour at a vet office up in Newport, in Newcastle. You go between eleven-thirty and twelve, you get a free microchip. Every now and then, they have free microchipping at different, at different events. But it needs to be available so that the low-income and, you know, and get it out in the community. So, I am really glad to get involved. I think that the phone number needs to be changed so you're not having to deal with a nine-one-one dispatcher. And plus, when I called on a Friday at one-thirty in the afternoon, your, your phone number tells you that Animal Control is open from seven in the morning till seven at night, yet there was many times when I called and nobody was available. And when I called on a Friday at one-thirty, I, they said, nope, they're not gonna be back till tomorrow. So, what, you tack on another fifty-five dollar fee because, you know, your, your two officers are not available? And plus, the animals are taken to a facility that's off-site and that the public isn't even allowed to go to. So, there's a lot that needs to be improved. I don't, I don't know what you're gonna do about this poor woman's dog. I mean...
Well, as I said, we're not gonna solve it here tonight. What I'd like you to do is provide that information to our officer in the back, and then we will follow up and get back to you.
Okay. It's a first step. I know it's got a long way to go, but it's a first step. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for being here. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. We have nine items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
Seeing none, I move the consent agenda to be adopted as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Person.
No unfinished business.
Okay, Mr. McIrvin.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Utilities Committee has a committee report to present.
Utilities Committee Committee Report. Amendment number four to contract sixteen-one-oh-three with RH two Engineering for final design to replace the Highlands four-thirty-five pressure zone reservoir and mains. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute amendment number four to sixteen-one-oh-three with RH two Engineering in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred dollars for final design for replacement of the Highlands four-three-five pressure zone reservoir and mains. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Perez.
I move that council concur with the Utilities, Utilities Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Perez, second by Mr. McIrvin. The council concur with the Utilities Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee has six reports to present tonight.
Hey, the first report is a grant to the Renton Housing Authority Sunset Oaks Housing Project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to award a seven-hundred thousand dollar grant, including five hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred and forty dollars from the general fund and one hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars from the Sunset Terrace Density Fee Payment to the Renton Housing Authority to help pay for the development and construction of a sixty-unit Sunset Oaks Affordable Rental Housing Project, subject to an acceptable agreement between the city and the Renton Housing Authority to be approved by council. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Next, next report is an agreement for grant awards to Homestead Community Land Trust for the Willow Crest Town Homes. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to, one, approve the Housing Opportunity Fund and Density Fee Affordable Home Ownership Agreement with Homestead Community Land Trust for the Willow Crest Town Homes. And two, authorize the mayor to execute said agreement in substantially the same form. Signed by the committee chair and member, or vice chair, sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The next is an interagency between King County Wastewater Treatment Division and Renton. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute an interagency agreement with the King County Wastewater Treatment Division. The two hundred fifty thousand dollar payment that will be made to the city by the King County Wastewater Treatment Division as compensation for impacts of the Eastside Interceptor Section Two Rehabilitation Phase Two project, which was made to Logan Avenue North and Burnett Avenue North, shall be used by Renton to fund the transportation capital improvement project in the vicinity of the Interceptor project. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The next is regarding the hiring of Enterprise Content Manager Deputy City Clerk at Step E. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to hire the Enterprise Content Manager Deputy City Clerk at Step E of salary grade M twenty-four effective December second, two thousand nineteen. The position is currently budgeted at Step E of salary grade M twenty-four. There are no increased costs in two thousand nineteen. Three applicants were invited for interviews during the recruitment process. The recommended candidate met all of the qualifications of the position and holds a bachelor's degree in English Information Management and master's degree in Information Management Systems. The candidate also has over twelve years of government experience. The committee report is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Prince. The council concur with this Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The next is approval of twenty-twenty reclassifications. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the reclassification of twenty-six employees in recognition of higher levels of duties and responsibility as listed below. In the ASD department, reclassify the Administrative Assistant to Admin Assistant to ASD, salary grade N sixteen. Reclassify three Senior Network System Specialists to salary grade A twenty-eight. And reclassify the Network System Specialist to salary grade A twenty-four. Community and Economic Development Department, reclassify the Administrative Assistant to Admin Assistant to CED, salary grade N one, N sixteen. Reclassify four Permit Technicians to Permit Services Specialists, salary grade A thirteen. Community Services Department, reclass the Admin Assistant to Admin Assistant to Community Services, salary grade N sixteen. And reclassify the three Recreation Assistants to salary grade A nine. Executive Department, reclass the Executive Assistant to salary grade M nineteen. And reclassify the Secretary Two to Administrative Secretary One, salary grade N zero-nine. Human Resources and Risk Management Department, reclass the Admin Assistant to Admin Assistant to Human Resources, salary grade N sixteen, and reclassify the HR Assistant to HR Specialist, salary grade N thirteen. Legal Department, City Attorney, reclassify the Admin Assistant to Admin Assistant to City Attorney, salary grade N sixteen. Legislative Department, reclassify the City Council Liaison to salary grade M nineteen. Police Department, reclassify the Administrative Assistant to Admin Assistant to Police Department, salary grade N sixteen. Public Works Department, reclass the Admin Assistant to Admin Assistant to Public Work, salary grade N sixteen. And Maintenance Services, reclassify the Office Assistant Three to Asset Management Systems Technician, salary grade A fourteen. Reclassify the Water Maintenance Services Supervisor to salary grade A twenty-three. And reclassify One Maintenance Services Worker Three, employee number zero-four-four-four-eight, to Water Meter Technician Services Supervisor, salary grade A twenty-one. And Transportation, reclassify One Secretary Two, which is a half-time, full-time equivalent position, to Administrative Secretary One, half-time, full-time, FTE essentially, salary grade A oh-nine. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The last one is vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. The council payable total payment of twenty-one million, eighty-four thousand, two hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-four cents for a number of vouchers and payroll benefit withholding vouchers, and also eight wire transfers. Payroll, total payment of one million, five hundred thirteen thousand, four hundred ninety dollars and seventy-three cents for payroll vouchers, which include six hundred and seventy-nine direct deposits and eleven checks. This is the October sixteenth to October thirty-first, two thousand nineteen pay period. And a Kidder Matthews total payment of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents for a number of vouchers. The vouchers can be viewed in the city clerk's office. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Development Committee has a committee report.
Okay, two thousand nineteen Title Four Docket Number Fourteen amendments. The Planning and Development Committee recommends adoption of the two thousand nineteen Title Four Docket Fourteen items listed below. Additionally, the Planning and Development Committee recommends that ordinance for these items be presented for first reading. D one sixty-five accessory dwelling units, ADU review, and D one sixty-seven commercial and recreation vehicle parking in residential zones. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the Planning Development Committee, the council concur in the Planning Development Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Perez. The council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to legislation. We have seven ordinances as if you didn't have enough to read.
No. Thanks. So, the first ordinance is regarding the multifamily property tax exemption. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending four dash one dash two twenty, D two of the Rent Municipal Code, modifying project eligibility requirements to qualify for an exemption from property taxation, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Perez. This ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, the next one is regarding impact fee regulations. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsection four-one-one-ninety-G of the Rent Municipal Code, amending impact fee regulations, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Perez. This ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The next ordinance is regarding street trees. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, revising regulations related to street trees by amending subsections four-four-seventy-A, four-four-seventy-B, four-four-seventy-D, four-four-seventy-F-two, four-four-seventy-G-two, and four-four-one-thirty-H-nine-D, sections nine-fifteen-one, nine-fifteen-two, and nine-fifteen-three. The definition of drip line in section four-eleven-forty and chapter nine-thirteen of the Rent Municipal Code, adding definitions of arborist city to section four-eleven-ten and planting strip to four-eleven-one-sixty of the Rent Municipal Code, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Perez. This ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, the next ordinance is regarding the vehicle parking in residential zones. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections four-four-eighty-G and four-nine-two-forty-D-one of the Rent Municipal Code and adding sections four-four-eighty-five and four-nine-one-oh-five to the Rent Municipal Code regulating vehicle parking of residentially-zoned property, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Perez. This ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, the next ordinance is regarding accessory dwelling units. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Rent Municipal Code subsections four-two-sixty-D, four-two-eighty-A-seventy, or A-seven, excuse me, four-two-one-ten-A, four-two-one-ten-B, four-two-one-ten-C, four-two-one-ten-D, four-two-one-ten-E, four-two-one-ten-F, four-three-one-ten-E-five-A-one, four-four-eighty-E-two-A, four-four-eighty-E-two-E, and four-four-eighty-F-ten-D, chapter four-two and section four-nine-thirty, by amending accessory dwelling unit, ADU, development standards, including adding a new section, four-two-one-sixteen, regulating ADU design standards, amending parking standards related, relating to ADUs, adding a new subsection, four-nine-thirty-H, regulating ADU decision criteria, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Perez. This ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The last two ordinances are for second and final reading. First one is EUP criteria for wireless facilities. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending section four-four-one-forty of the Rent Municipal Code, adding temporary wireless communication facility standards, adding a definition of wireless communication facility, temporary, cleaning-up formatting, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Perez. This ordinance be adopted as read, and it requires a roll call.
Mr. Person. Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McErvin.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
Ayes have it.
And the final ordinance is regarding the speed limit lowering petitions. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending chapter 1011 of the Rent Municipal Code by adding a new section, 10112, providing procedures for establishing a maximum speed limit at 20 miles per hour on a case-by-case basis on residential neighborhood streets, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McErvin.
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McErvin, second by Ms. Perez. This ordinance be adopted as read, and it requires a roll call.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McErvin.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni.
Aye.
And Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
Ayes have it. Thanks, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Person.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I got a lot tonight. December 2nd, next Monday, there'll be no meetings because of the council holiday. And then, on December 9th, at 5:30 PM, committee the whole in the conferencing center, three topics, homeless trends and police efforts, council vacancy policy, and emerging issues. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McErvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would just like to announce that on Monday, December 9th, at 4:00 PM in the council conference room, the Transportation Committee will be meeting. There are two items on the agenda, the airport leasing policies and emerging issues in transportation. And then, I also just need to announce that the Community Services Committee has been canceled.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Perez.
None of your business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, December 9th, at 5:00 PM, the Finance Committee will be meeting in the council conference room. We have five items to discuss. Philip Arnold Park Professional Service Agreement, Construction Inspector Hire at Step D, allocation of lodging tax funding for 2020, vouchers, and emerging issues in finance. And announcing for Councilman Corman, the Public Safety Committee scheduled for December 9th is canceled.
Okay.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Development Committee meeting scheduled for Monday, December 9th has been canceled.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the city attorney?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the meeting be adjourned.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, that we forego questions of the city attorney. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The city attorney wouldn't like the questions that I were gonna ask.
The ayes have it.
Or maybe you wouldn't have liked the answer.